September 19th, meeting of the Pierce County Council. The time is 3:06 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Here.
And Councilmember Mello.
Here.
There are seven members present.
We have all seven members present in a quorum. Item number three is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag and our Land Acknowledgement. Please join us in listening to the Land Acknowledgement and Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, led by Councilmember Herrera, followed by a moment of silence dedicated to our men and women serving in the military overseas. Councilmember Herrera.
We acknowledge that we are on the traditional homelands of the Coast Salish tribes. Coast Salish people have lived, on, and stewed these lands since time immemorial and continue to do so today. We recognize that the Land Acknowledgement is one small step towards true alliedship, and we commit to uplifting the voices, experiences, and histories of the indigenous people of this land. I now would like to invite everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We are at Section Four, which is the approval of our agenda. Are there any objections to approving today's agenda as presented? Seeing no objection, today's agenda will stand approved. On today's council agenda, there will be multiple opportunities for public comment. On the consent agenda, you may provide comment on any final action item. This does not include items placed on the consent agenda for introduction and scheduling. Today's consent agenda has two appointments for final hearing and a motion for settlement. During Sections Eight and Nine of the agenda, we'll take public comment on each ordinance and resolution individually. And finally, under Community Forum, there will be an opportunity to address the council on any topic that is not on today's agenda. So we're now at Section Five, the Consent Agenda. We have the Consent Agenda before us. Does any member wish to pull any item from the Consent Agenda? Vice Chair Campbell.
Chair, we have a lot of people online, and I just want to make sure I'm not missing any of our appointees today. Is Jay Beck or Julia Runyon, if you're online or in the room, if you could acknowledge? Chair, I would move the Consent Agenda as presented.
It's been properly moved and segmented that we adopt the Consent Agenda as presented. We'll now open this up for a public hearing on any final action item on the Consent Agenda. Is there any member of the public wishing to provide comment on any final action item on our Consent Agenda? And we'll start here in chambers. Anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on the final action item on the Consent Agenda? I'm not seeing any Mr. Winesbury, anybody in the Zoom room.
Any members of the public wishing to provide comment on the public agenda? Press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing on the Consent Agenda, and we'll move to a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the Consent Agenda?
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the Consent Agenda is adopted. That does bring us now to messages from the executive, judges, and prosecuting attorney. And first up, I'm very pleased to welcome to these county council chambers our Pierce County Executive Bruce Damier. Executive Damier is here today to present the 2024 to 2025 Pierce County budget. Mr. Damier, welcome. We welcome you here. We know you and your team have put a tremendous amount of work into this proposed budget, and we're eager to hear from you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the council. It is an honor to be before you, representing the people of Pierce County as their county executive. I bring before you our 2024-25 budget proposal. It represents over four months' worth of work by everybody in the executive and judicial branches, all the separately elected officials. It is a $3.2 billion plan to make our communities vibrant, our business climate entrepreneurial, and our government effective. It is a significant investment in our community's resources in those priorities. At the same time, we also know that it represents only a 1.2% growth from our current biennium. The general fund is $890 million, which is a 2.4% growth of our current biennium. We all know that the costs that our community has been experiencing and our county has been experiencing are far greater than 2.4%. So this is a budget that reflects a need for a great deal of difficult decisions and priorizations. It's very different than the budgets I have submitted previously. And because of that, we decided to change up the process. In particular, we thought it was very important to get the feedback from our community, to listen to what they had to say about priorities and about investments when we've got to go forward with this. So we did a very robust community engagement survey that took place over about two months. It engaged 2,577 residents responded. And as important to that, they answered both kind of questions about relative priorities, what was important to them, how they would invest money. But there also was a point where they got to answer questions free form. Four questions, and they could answer whatever they wanted. That results in 191 pages of responses. I've read every one. I think it's important. It gives a great deal of context to what we need to do and what our community is feeling, what they're experiencing, what their concerns are, what their hopes are. The questions were, what do you like most about living or working in Pierce County? What do you like least about living or working in Pierce County? Do you have specific services in mind that you would cut or reduce? And is there anything else you'd like to share? The responses are, this is really helpful work in what we're doing. The numerical responses, the prioritization, really important. But the comments really give us insight, right? They talk about, there is no question that our community broadly is feeling the same financial pressures that we are or more, that they are feeling tapped out, that they are struggling with their home budget, that they are feeling housing affordability like never before. You know, the number of comments where people say they are afraid they can't live here anymore, they're afraid their kids won't be able to live in the neighborhood that they grew up in, those kind of things are here big time. So it was a very important tool that shaped this document significantly. And they were very clear. There was no question that three priorities jumped out stronger than any other way, both in how they invested money and in what they ranked as most important. And it will come as no surprise to anybody on this dais that the top priority is something we all know, and that is public safety, specifically crime. They are very concerned. They are fearful for their community, and in some cases, they're fearful for their own safety. There's more than one person shared stories about how they were a victim of crime. That is without question the top priority. It reflects over three-quarters of the folks ranked it as the most important. And if you look at how they would invest their money, they would invest their money in public safety four times more than any other item. So this is absolutely clear that we have been focusing a lot, we have been investing a lot in crime. We've talked, I've talked about an epidemic of lawlessness. I am proud of some of the work that we have done. We are seeing some momentum. But there is no question that this is not the time to back away or to lessen our focus. And this budget continues to focus on keeping our communities safe. It invests 12% more money into our Sheriff's Department, $39 million. That is, a tremendous amount of that is towards staffing. We know we're down through actions of others outside this room, that there's been a real challenge in recruiting and hiring and getting the best people to serve in those very challenging positions. But we also know that our, the incentives and the training and the things that we have done in the past, the lateral incentives, the hiring incentives, have yielded results. We are seeing an uptick in our staffing. But we all know we are in a deep hole. We are a long ways from getting our Sheriff's Department's staffing, both in patrol and corrections, up to the levels of which we budget, the levels that we know we need to keep our community safe. So we are investing more money in our Sheriff's Department. We are continuing our hiring incentives. We are investing more money in training and equipping to keep both our deputies and our community safe. So that is by far our biggest priority. Second to that is we must hold criminals accountable. So we are continuing to invest and investing more in our prosecutor's office. There's a 9% increase in the funding for our prosecutor's office. We know that they not only have to deal with the wave of crime that our community is feeling today, but they also are dealing with backlogs from the pandemic and from a variety of court rulings and legislation passed in Olympia. So we have got to continue to have increased staffing in our prosecutor's office to deal with that backlog, to get our community caught up. And we are focusing on felonies. This is the crime that is directly impacting people and making them feel not safe in our community. So we are continuing to invest and investing more, 5% more, in our Superior Court. That is critical when we talk about catching criminals, charging criminals, trying criminals, and getting them off the streets in our community. So those are all areas that we are focusing strongly. It is by far the top priority of this budget. There are other things in there we are proposing. It's the community safety, the Business Safety and Security Grant Program is funded in here, again, to help deal with that. There's a variety of other areas with respect to public safety that we are making smart and smart investments. So no question, that's number one. Number two candidly surprised me a little bit, and that was transportation. And when you look at it, it again was not public safety, but it was a dominant number two. And if you look at the comments, you will see that it is mostly frustration with congestion. There's a lot of frustration with growth without adequate infrastructure. There's a lot of discussions about sitting in traffic. There's a lot of discussion about how we need to be, invest money wisely to make our communities effective, to allow cars to move, to allow transit to move, and to keep people safe on our roads, both on the roads and beside the roads. So our, this budget continues to focus on those areas in response to that issue. We continue to focus on connecting State Route 167, finally completing it, on the Canyon Road Connector, on the buildout of the road down from Tahalet, and a focus on smart signalization. There's a lot of questions in here about light timing and things like that, a lot of comments. So we're going to continue to focus on all those things. We want to invest in connectivity, congestion relief, and smart approaches. But it also shows a significant investment in trail sidewalks and crosswalks. 25 miles of additional sidewalks, 334 new crosswalks, nine miles of new trails. So it is not just roads, it is all methods of transportation. We all know that we have seen some tragic accidents in our community where people have been hurt riding bikes in a safe way and hit by a car on State Route Seven, right? That is just terrible. So we continue to focus a lot on transportation and making our system more effective in dealing with the growth that we have, no question. The third area didn't surprise me at all, and it was just a little bit below transportation. So you've got public safety, transportation, homelessness, and then kind of everything else is down below. And when you talk about homelessness, and when you look at the concerns that our residents have, frustration comes out dramatically. And you will see this, these comments reflect our community. They reflect a tremendous diversity of our community. They reflect comments, you know, from downtown Tacoma to Ashford and Elbe. They represent comments from the Key Peninsula. They represent comments from our cities and from our towns. And in the area of homelessness, they represent people that think we are not doing enough and should do more, and they represent people that think we should stop doing whatever we're doing, it's a crazy waste of time, right? But what those folks have in common is that they see, and let's be clear, when they are referring to homelessness, I want to be clear about this, I think they are referring strictly to chronic homelessness, the homelessness we see on our streets. I want to thank our Human Services Team under the leadership of Heather Moss for the tremendous effective, tremendously effective programs we have in dealing with kind of three-quarters of those who find themselves in homelessness for a period of time or things like that. We've got a lot of programs that help those people get stably housed, to get them, you know, rapid rehousing. We've got a number of programs that are very effective. What we're talking about is the quarter of the people who are in our homeless programs that are the chronically homeless, those on the streets, those that are, as we all know, oftentimes trapped with untreated mental illness or an addiction, right? And there is, the comments of our community reflect frustration. They want, they want better. They see that as being wrong and unhealthy and dangerous and terrible for the people who are living on those streets. And they also see it wrong for our community. That is very, it comes out loud and clear. They see untreated mental illness, they see addiction. They, a lot of attribute it to drugs. They attribute it to the powerful, the danger of addiction in our community. So they see that very strongly and want us to try to address it and specifically talk about, you should be looking throughout the, throughout the country for a program that's effective. I think I have one that's, that's effective. And again, I think those concerns validate the Pierce County Village concept about a community. They talk about wanting people to get well, they talk about people wanting to get back to work and taking control of their lives. Those are the themes that are really strong when it comes to effectively addressing homelessness in our community. They also talk a lot about drugs. They talk a lot about drugs and the ravaging that it is doing to our community. Fentanyl is doing things, we, you know the numbers, right? That, that fentanyl overdose deaths in our community exceed both homicides, gun violence, you know, gun violence, and motor vehicle fatalities, both of which are at record or near-record levels, that the fatal drug overdoses particularly associated with fentanyl are almost twice as much as those two added together. It is ravaging our community. And I'm sure you saw the story from this weekend where we lost a two-year-old child who accidentally ingested fentanyl in their home under the care of their 33-year-old father. And as tragic as that is, that wasn't the only one. We had another infant ingest, what we think is ingest fentanyl in the care of their, their parent. So I am thankful that we are investing more money than ever before and thankful that we've got more local resources to go into this battle to get our community safe from these ravages of fentanyl and other things. It is, it is just devastating to see the impact around that. So that is, is critically important as we go forward. Also, you know, as I mentioned, there's a, related to this, not, you know, connected tangentially, is housing affordability. You know, the number of folks that are lamenting the cost of living, lamenting that their kids can't live in Pierce County. I am thankful for the work we're doing and the investment we are making into working hard to increase the affordability. We need more and more types of housing. We need all kinds of flexibility there. We need that to give people options in our community, critically important as we go forward. There's not a lot of comments about jobs in here, not surprising. But we know that jobs in the economy, that if we don't have good jobs for our residents, it doesn't matter. We've talked a lot about, we need more and better jobs. We need career ladders that lead to career wage jobs. Really proud of some of the work that we are doing there. This continues to do that and expands it. Really proud of the work of the Pierce County Business Accelerator. As we all know, that's a very effective program, nationally recognized, supporting new and grow, and growing small businesses in our communities of color, women, and veterans. I had the chance to welcome the 14th cohort. The 14th cohort, 31 budding entrepreneurs in there. Great to see them, exciting to see them. We're proposing to continue to do that for the next two years. To be transformational, it is, it is transformational now in the lives of individuals, and I think it will be, while their small businesses are significant, but I think the investment in them and their growth is going to be dramatic in their families. But to be really transformative for our community, it needs to be a sustained effort. It needs to be six, eight, 10 years of this to really change the culture of our community. So we're proposing to continue that as well. So a lot of very important efforts there. And one thing that is particularly important that comes out, when you ask, what do you like most about living in Pierce County, living or working in Pierce County? The dominant theme that came out was, you know, the number of comments about the water, the number of comments about the mountain, just dramatic. The number of comments about people that love being part of this community and raising their kids in this community, right? That was really vibrant. I think that's what we all feel, right? That's why people want to be here. But at the same time, when you talk about what you like least about living and working in Pierce County, a lot of comments about litter, a lot of comments about graffiti, about that. So you know that we have, you know, after the pandemic, when that, we re-jumpstarted our code enforcement program, that we are going after blighted and trash properties aggressively. We are gonna, we are aggressively working out that. You know that as of my last state of the county, we are aggressively going after illegal encampments, that that is not good for anybody, it's terrible for our community. This budget includes a further expansion of our efforts to make this a great place for our community to live. Specifically, we're proposing $4.5 million over the next biennium to go toward an effort with litter removal, which is leveraging new technology. We found these new trucks that can drive by with vacuums and really do well to clean the sides of the streets. So we're proposing two new trucks and the staff to run them, and we're promoting, proposing money to go into an innovative litter or graffiti removal program. We've looked at what some others have done, and I think this is an area that we need to step up. And it's not an area that we will, well, we're proposing kind of Pierce County be out in front. This is a program that we need to do in partnership with our cities and frankly, with the State Department of Transportation, right? Because if we, if we painted over just the graffiti in unincorporated Pierce County or just cleaned up the litter in unincorporated Pierce County, that wouldn't be enough. People wouldn't notice the difference. That's not what, what our community needs. We need the entire county addressed. I am excited about the effort, litter removal efforts and the things that are happening through State Department of Transportation that we can partner with very effectively. And I'm, I'm excited about some of the initiatives that I, that we can build on in other areas with respect to graffiti removal. It's, there's some really creative things out there, and we can do it. And I think we can do it in partnership with those others and make a significant impact for our community, to make it the kind of Pierce County that we are all proud to call home, that we want. And I will close kind of where I started. This is my, my last budget that I will propose for Pierce County, but it reflects the same principles that my first budget did and all the budgets in between did, that we need to demonstrate a tremendous amount of fiscal discipline, that we need to plan long term to make sure that we've got stable programs for our residents and for our employees, that we need to leverage transparency, that that is critically important. Those principles have served our community well. We've been through a pandemic, we've been through a bunch of some ups and downs, and we've also got significant outside validation for our efforts. You, you are aware that we most recently got our second of two bond rating upgrades on this one from Moody's to AAA, the highest that a municipality can get and one of, that very few municipalities ever get, that they saw our discipline, that they saw our sound management practices, that they saw our transparency efforts, open Pierce County, open budget, open checkbook, all of those efforts, and that gave them the confidence to raise it. And that benefits our community right now in the sense that we had a much better bond rating, got much favorable treatment when we just went out for $50 million of bonds to buy the 1501 market building that will position our, our county to be much more effective and efficient going forward. This budget doesn't have any layoffs in it, but it does have eliminating some vacant positions, it does has reallocating resources around it. That's the kind of sound fiscal management that we need and need to continue. There are hard decisions in here, but it also looks out, before when I stood before you, I said our budgets have looked out six years. This budget looks out 10. We, we are at a really critical juncture where we need to make sure that we are positioning ourselves for the long term. As I said, we are facing, you know, cost pressures that are exceeding our revenue growth, right? We have to tighten our belt, and this budget does that. And it uses our ending fund balance, our reserves, our savings on, to buy us the time to manage appropriately and to do that over the long term. I would close by asking you in the strongest possible terms, in urging you in the strongest possible terms, please remember the importance of fiscal discipline. Please remember how that has served our community and our employees well in the work that you're about to do for the next two months. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you so much, Executive Damier. Thank you for meeting your charter responsibilities to deliver a proposed budget to the council for our consideration, and certain that it was incredibly thoughtful. And as you've indicated, this council will spend the next 10 weeks working really hard to understand what's in the budget proposal, thinking through what the council and communities' priorities are, how they get put in the final version of the budget that the council will adopt. We will endeavor to do all of our work incredibly transparently. All of our meetings will be open to the public. We will have nearly every one of your department directors up here to explain what's in the budget proposal, answer questions, and help think through how the community's priorities are reflected in, in those budget proposals. We too will continue to listen to the community and provide many opportunities for members of the public to continue to engage in the development of this budget. There's a banner on the homepage of the Office of the County Council's website called Follow Development of the 2024-2025 Budget. Members of the public are encouraged to click on that banner. Again, all of the presentations- Again, all of the presentations we will have from department directors are open to the public, will be on PCTV, available online, live in person. We make that all available on the council's website, and all of our deliberations will be in public. And finally, we certainly have a commitment to develop a budget that is, that is fiscally sound as well and is in very much alignment with the, what we all know to be the, the many important priorities of, of this committee. So this council has its work cut out for ourselves. Over the next 10 weeks, we have meetings every single week to deliberate on this budget, and we, we fully expect to be able to approve a budget by the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So look forward to collaborating with, with you and your team in that very hard work and look forward to working with this council and developing the final budget. So thank you for your hard work, Executive.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I forgot to mention, you're going to see the survey results. Julie DeMuth is going to present them on the 28th of this month. If you want to get started on the 191 pages of comments, we could probably get that to you early. I know it takes, it takes a while to go through, having done that. And I would just like to close by expressing on behalf of all of the residents of Pierce County, my deepest appreciation and respect for Gary Robinson and Julie DeMuth. They do a phenomenal job. This is mostly their work, Parak. Our community has been blessed to have them leading on these endeavors.
Thank you, thank you, Executive Dan Meyer. Thank you for acknowledging them. The council is grateful for their availability and their knowledge and very hard work and dedication to this community. We absolutely concur and will continue to work closely with them through budget development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There were two other messages from the executive to read into the record. Executive Dan Meyer transmitted the following ordinance, which was approved and signed on September 12th, 2023, and that included ordinance number 202332, which was an ordinance of the county council ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the service employees International Union Local 925. These are employees at the Department of Assigned Counsel. There was also a message from Executive Dan Meyer transmitting the following ordinance, which was approved and signed on September 18th of this year, and that was ordinance number 202328, and that was an ordinance of the county council relating to pet shops and regulating the sale of dogs and cats. That brings us to item number seven, Proclamations, Recognitions and Awards. Our first proclamation is proclaiming September 22nd, 2023 as Falls Prevention Awareness Day in Pierce County. I'd like to invite Ivan Tudela. Ivan, welcome, social services program specialist within Pierce County Human Services Department to the podium. And if you have any guests, Ivan, please bring them up. Well, welcome, and I'm pleased to read this proclamation to the record on behalf of the county council. So whereas more than 1 to 37,000 Pierce County residents, 65 and older, falls account for 57% of all injury-related deaths in Washington State, according to the Washington State Department of Health. And falls are the most common cause of non-fatal injuries and hospital admissions for trauma, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control report that 3 million people 65 and older are treated in emergency departments each year for fall injuries, and more than 800,000 patients are hospitalized a year because of falling, most often because of a head injury or a hip fracture, which often impacts quality of life, independent living and risk factors for early death. And whereas falls are preventable, and the National Council on Aging demonstrates numerous ways the risk can be greatly reduced by helping seniors continue living healthy, independent lives, such as exercising regularly, reviewing medications with a healthcare provider, annual eye exams, and making our homes safer with safety devices. And whereas the Pierce County, the Pierce County Fall Prevention Coalition has as its goal a falls-free Pierce County and devotes its energy to reducing falls among older adults by hosting educational events, partnering with local agencies to provide resources, and advocating for health and fitness to reduce falls at home, in the workplace and in the community of Pierce County. And whereas the Pierce County Fall Prevention Coalition not only expanded membership this year, but also redesigned its website with new graphics and updated fall prevention resources, including the Aging Wisely Fall Prevention Video with an interactive exercise program, a locator map. And whereas the Pierce County Fall Prevention Coalition Trifold Brochure has been fully updated with a new resource list, a QR code, and is also available in Spanish and widely distributed across Pierce County, and 3,000 brochures have already been donated to the Santa for Seniors Program to promote fall prevention among their recipients. And whereas Pierce County Human Services in partnership with the Pierce County Fall Prevention Coalition will sponsor a free Fall Prevention Awareness Day event on Friday, September 22nd, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Gordon Family YMCA located in Sumner, Washington. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Pierce County Council on this 19th day of September 2023, that this Saturday, September 22nd, is recognized as Fall Prevention Awareness Day in Pierce County, Washington, and all community members are encouraged to attend the aforementioned event to learn more about preventing falls. Let's give them a hand. Ivan, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, council members, and thank you. We are honored to be here and to accept this proclamation. Fall injuries remain a persistent but preventable problem in our aging communities. On behalf of the Pierce County Fall Prevention Coalition and our coalition agency partners, we want to thank you for promoting, for promoting fall prevention awareness by proclaiming this Friday as Fall Prevention Awareness Day. Now invite my partner, Bunny Smith, to make a comment.
So I've been the director of the Mid-County Community Center located in unincorporated Pierce County for over 16 years. About seven years ago, I was approached by a colleague who served on the Fall Prevention Coalition, and they wanted a senior center to be part of it because we are such a gateway for senior services and programs in Pierce County. When they called me just two weeks prior, one of my clients had fallen at home and she wasn't found for several days, and she passed just two days later. When they said that I could help prevent falls, I understood there's much more than a financial cost, there's an emotional cost, and I continue to, to work hard, and the coalition as a whole has really made this our mission to help reduce falls, in fall injuries in Pierce County. So we appreciate your, your support and your awareness, and we will continue to do what we can to prevent falls.
Well, thank you to both of you. I'd like to open this up now to other members of the county council for any remarks they might have. Remarks? We'll start with Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you both for being here and for the work you do in community. We, everyone is touched by an aging person in their life, or they are an aging person in their life, I guess is the other way to look at it. But for those that care for somebody who's aging and watching them try and keep their independence and not knowing what to do to help them, this is such a great resource because it allows both the individual to learn for themselves, and also if you are a child, a son or daughter, who is trying to figure out, how do I help my parents stay in their home? How do I help my grandparents stay in their home? We have resources and we have tools, and that's what this is about, which is why it's so important we highlight it. So just acknowledge and thank you for the work that you do to help elevate this so that people know we have some answers. They're not always perfect, but we can at least give you, get you on the right path and give you some ideas. So appreciation to, to the work you do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. My excitement, disappointment, then excitement when I heard about this proclamation, I thought it was fall prevention, like we're going to try to keep summer going. Seems appropriate since we are just a few days from the beginning of fall, and so what a great nexus to be that annual reminder that we can't prevent fall, but we can prevent falls, and that it is important, particularly as we get into a little bit more rainy season or even frost on, out and about, that we come back and focus on that. And Bunny, I just want to say, you know, running the work you've done there at the senior center there in Mid-County and working with the seniors that go there on that, and then pivoting during the pandemic to make sure that you were setting up Zoom and online and keeping those motions going, so that they continued or brought them in, social distancing, that you didn't give up on our seniors during the pandemic, and teaching them, you know, the motor skills as fall prevention year-round, all the way through the pandemic. My great thanks of myself and the many seniors you were able to help and others who maybe couldn't get out, who are watching it online. And so everything that you did backs up the work that you're here to ask others to participate in. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Any other final remarks? Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for what you do, because I'm getting closer to that demographic, but I think in reality, we need to know that there's resources available, and just because you need a cane or a walker doesn't mean you're not still a person. And, I mean, aging is a reality with all of us. Some of us fight it more than others, and, but, you know, I, I think there again, not only Mid-County, but all of Pierce County, King County, State of Washington deals with this issue, and anything that you can do to inform seniors to stay safe, to maybe slow down the tango a little bit more, and, you know, we all think we can still do things we used to do, but there again, it is a reality, it's what we have to deal with, and we do have loved ones that are aging up, and we need to make sure, as Councilmember Hitchens said, that they continue to live an independent life as much as they can. So with that, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Any other final remarks? I just want to close, thank you for giving us an opportunity to promote the resources that are out there in our community, throughout the community, and the really practical ways we can help prevent falls. It's really important to work, you know, when I reflect on this, I, I can't help but reflect on a recent report. I know we've all read from the Surgeon General, the United States Surgeon General, about isolation. I think all of us have, have heard about this recent report, that isolation in our country, and right here in Pierce County, isolation is causing one of, is a driving cause of death, believe it or not, because of how isolation drives folks' emotional state and depression and anxiety and loss of connectivity to, to their community. And it was said that in this U.S. Surgeon General report, that isolation is just like smoking 14 cigarettes a day on the regular. It's that, it's that serious. It causes that kind of harm to the human body. And so what's the connection to falls? Well, you know, I think about my aging parents and my grandparents and others I know, and you think about if they have a fall and they fracture their hip, as was trying to be illustrated in the proclamation, and they're no longer able to do the activities that they have grown accustomed to doing to keep their social network going, whatever that is, they get isolated. When, right, if your mobility is majorly hamstrung because of a fall, we know, we know this to happen all the time, that they're no longer able to keep up their social network, hence becoming isolated and more and more isolated. And we now know through data that that is a leading cause of death. That's really serious. So this, this work is really important. You're doing great on-the-ground work, you and others like you who are doing this. Thank you for delivering those services, those prevention services and helping us figure out how we can do that. With that, I would love to invite both of you all the way up here, if we could grab a photo and present you with this proclamation.
Okay. Well, there we go.
Thank you. Good to see you. All right, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you. Thank you again for being with us today to help promote Falls Prevention Awareness Day. We have another really important proclamation, and that is to proclaim September the 18th through the 24th, 2023, as National Diaper Need Awareness Week in Pierce County. And I'd like to invite Erica Bartlett and Carrie Ching from the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department, and Bob and Jerry Maynard from Kidvantage, and other friends, if you want to surround them, if you're here for that and you want to surround them at the podium, you are more than welcome to do so. So all those individuals that I called up and are here for National Diaper Need Awareness Week, please, please surround our podium. And I'd like to call on Councilmember Hitchens to read this proclamation into the record. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Whereas national surveys and research studies report that nearly one in two families struggle with diaper needs, and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend the available supply. And whereas, when parents cannot afford a clean supply of diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry and healthy, it can adversely affect the health and well-being of children and their families. And whereas, when babies and toddlers do not have enough diapers, they risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention, and this can lead to medical costs, lack of childcare and missing school or work, all of which can limit a family's economic prospects and well-being. And whereas, a supply of diapers is often an expectation for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs that enable children to thrive and parents to work. And whereas, the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department, through its network of family resource centers, operates diaper distribution hubs in partnership with First Five Fundamentals, and this service leads parents and other resources to, this leads parents to other resources and services that the centers offer. And whereas, through their important work of addressing diaper need, diaper banks play a critical role in connecting parents to the Positive Parenting Program, Triple P, which increases parents' competence and competence in raising children to reach their full potential. And whereas, the people of Pierce County recognize that diaper need is a public health issue, and addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's families and communities and improved health for children, thus ensuring all children and families have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this 19th day of September, 2023, by the Pierce County Council, that the week of September 18th through the 24th, 2023, is National Diaper Need Awareness Week in Pierce County. And we call upon the community to thank the aforementioned diaper banks, their staff, volunteers and donors for their courageous service during the crisis, and encourage the people of Pierce County to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and support those organizations that collect and distribute diapers to families struggling with diaper need, so that all of Pierce County childrens and families can live and thrive and reach their full potential.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. We'd welcome your remarks.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Mello, and fellow council members. Councilmember Hitchens, thank you very much for sponsoring this bill, this proclamation, sorry. So I want to thank all of you for recognizing the work and the work of others. As you see, we have a room full of partners that work really tirelessly to address the needs of families that need these diapers. Every baby and every toddler should have clean diapers. All of the department's family resource centers help connect families to these diapers. It's a vital resource. Our diaper bank network is made possible through Our diaper bank network is made possible through a partnership with First Five Fundamentals, Pierce County Early Childhood Network. Today, we have Kate Ginn, Chief Operating Officer from First Five, to tell us a little bit more about this partnership and how we are meeting the need for diapers in Pierce County. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Mello, and members of the council, Kate Ginn from First Five Fundamentals. And I'm really excited to be here because this has been work that's been such a privilege to be a part of. Our mission is to uphold community-based initiatives to improve the well-being of children and families, whatever that is, which is constantly changing, identifying the resource gaps in our community together. And we just had a number of organizations in 2020 reach out to us stating that this was a common need, that families couldn't find places in Pierce County to access affordable baby supplies. So it's been really amazing to see how much the work has grown, serving about 200 families a month in 2020, and now over 600 a month routinely through the 11 sites across the county. So I'm really grateful for the council's partnership in investing ARPA relief funds to purchase diapers and wipes and get them into the hands of families. And families, and just really grateful as well for all of the partner diaper bank sites that actually do the work directly with families. We know, of course, that receiving one pack of diapers is not going to change a family's life, but we do really hope it's what draws them into a family resource center to build relationships. I think it's the relationships that do have the potential to change the trajectory for a family. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. What a brilliant incentive to bring people in. I'd like to call on the Maynards to also provide remarks.
Thank you, Chair Mello and councilmembers. We are delighted to be here. We represent Kidvantage. Now, Kidvantage, you used to know as Eastside Baby Corner. Eastside Baby Corner is a huge organization based in Issaquah with a branch in west, on the west side of Puget Sound. We are blessed to be able to work with Kidvantage because Kidvantage provides lots of things to kids, not just diapers, but they provide everything a child needs, birth through five in our area. And we work through agencies like the Pierce, like Peninsula School District and Kitsap County Public Health District to make sure that these kids are getting what they need.
Hi. Bob just sprung it on me this morning that I would be talking today. Hi, Robin. Kidvantage oftentimes has 600 to 800 orders a week, and out of those orders, providing everything a child needs, half of those are diapers. So you can imagine, each diaper order has 30 to 40 diapers in it, so you multiply that times 300, that's a lot of diapers. We, last year, Kidvantage gave to Pierce County 49,510 diapers. And this year, and we're just not even done with the year yet, we've already provided 57,800 diapers to families. And, you know, it was interesting that Executive Dan Meyer talked about homelessness. We actually provide items for children that live with their parents in their cars. And it's really interesting, we work with providers, not directly with the families, but we get a little note on there that says, "This little child is in a car, so we can only give them what will fit in a backpack." Well, diapers is one of them, sleeping bags is another. And so we give things, I think that people don't realize, when we deal with this many people, you don't have to go down very many streets to see homelessness, or three or four people, families living in an apartment. Families just can't afford, diapers are huge. Can you imagine, just for a week, you know, $25 or more for a diaper for a child? That's a lot in the budget. So this is huge, to get the word out, the diapers. People say, "Oh, and we've had people say, 'Well, why don't you do cloth diapers?'" Can you imagine? Most of our people don't have washers and dryers. They don't have transportation to get to a laundromat. Diapers, cloth diapers are even more expensive. So we are so excited to be able to help families with whatever they need. And we actually adopt the child. We don't always get their name, but sometimes we do. Like, I got one that was for Damian or something like that. And when we fill an order, we actually adopt that child, and we'll say, "Oh, he has to have this. He has to have that. He has to have Spider-Man. He has to have..." And so, and I know that all these people here that work with families do the same thing. So we just thank you so much for the proclamation. We thank you, Robin, for inviting us. She's been instrumental, huge for our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you both.
And we are in the fall demographic, so we're being very careful going back.
We all will be one day, God willing.
Yeah. And you don't have to be old.
No.
I guess I am, but no, you don't have to be.
Thank you for being careful. Thank you for being here and for the work that you do. Are there any other remarks by any of our esteemed guests? Don't feel like you have to, but I want to make sure I'm not leaving anybody out. Well, we thank all of you so much for being here. Allow me to open it up by remarks by other members of the county council. I'll begin with Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for what you do. You know, folks that have had kids, kind of, they know how important diapers are. And we also know how expensive they were. And I can only imagine, there's probably a number out there of how much families spend in a lifetime of a child and how much that is. But the difference is, from when I first was a father, long 25-plus years ago, my rent was a small house in the Parkland area for $475 a month. But the housing now is so expensive, where young families that live here in Pierce County have to sacrifice something. It's really crazy. Before, you know, hard-working, blue-collar person could make it, they could afford the diapers and what they needed to do. But increasingly, young people, just regular young people, in normal situations, find they have to rely on their parents or other family members to subsidize that. Usually, one of the happiest things, when there's a baby shower, people are giving out diapers. And as former parents, that's one of the things we know, is the most expensive thing for a new family member is the diaper thing. So you're filling a gap that's probably more needed now than it was before, just because of what's happening here in all of Washington, not just Pierce County. And we appreciate that, so. And bringing this up today kind of highlights that for our young people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I want to start by thanking Councilmember Hitchens for sponsoring this. And then when I saw that this was coming before us, I immediately thought of Bob and Jerry Maynard from my community and asked Councilmember Hitchens, "Could they come too?" She said, "We already have all these people coming." But thank you so much for allowing Bob and Jerry. And I think you all have heard with what they're doing, they're just such incredible members and leaders in our community. And I'll point out, too, that Kidvantage not only provides diapers to the Peninsula School District, as they mentioned, but they're providing diapers to the Purdy Women's Correctional Facility for those correctional ladies that have babies. And they're also in South Bates, Clover Park, Madison, Franklin Pierce, and the Tacoma School District, so they're everywhere. So I encourage you all to get to know them, if you don't know Kidvantage, because all of your programs, I mean, you can see the need, because you're all providing so many diapers, and we know that there's still so much need out there. So thank you all for all that you are doing. I know this comes from your heart. I can tell when you're talking about providing diapers to these families. Councilmember Herrera talked about how expensive it was. I remember that as well. And now, when I go to do baby gifts, and I'll go to Costco for the big box, I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, like 40 bucks or more." And that's the generic cheapest brand you can find. So, I mean, it's really, really difficult for families, and it's so important, as you all know, to the health of these babies. So thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, and thank you for making the effort to be here and for all that you do.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. The proclamation said the majority of what needed to be said today, but I find the bookends of fall prevention and diapers, we're talking about community health in our homes and how we can support our community, and that's what these are all about. It's about raising awareness of a need. When a family is trying to decide, "Do I buy diapers so I can keep bums clean and healthy?" Or "Food, so I can keep stomachs full?", that's not a decision that I really want any of our parents to have to go through. And diaper banks are one of the ways that we take off just one little, one little thing for maybe that week, which could be the thing that keeps that parent going for one more week and keeps that kid healthy and the family going. So just with greatest appreciation to the work that you do. And then the other thing it highlighted, which I will add, I stuck in there, is about the connections that are made, the connections with the families that come in the door seeking one thing, and then all of a sudden, you find out, "Oh, well, you actually could get involved with this program. Oh, we have Triple P. Oh, we have..." And it's how we engage with families to help our community grow up some wonderful children. So with greatest appreciation and respect to the work that you do to help our youth grow up and have clean bums and stay healthy. It's all good. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. I was hoping you weren't going to make the connection between the diaper and the senior. But...
I don't know if he was senior diaper.
Okay. But, you know, there again, I appreciate everything that you do. As kids, we don't have a choice to what family we're born into. And bringing a child up nowadays is challenging. I mean, it's tough. As Councilmember Herrera said, there are expenses that are way beyond what I had when I raised my four kids. And we see it in the community, that parents are making choices, and they need to have the ability to, every now and then, go to a food bank to augment what they have, because they've had to make choices, rent, food, diapers. And this gives a little sense of reality, that this happens day in, day out, and just a diaper can really brighten someone's day. And I appreciate everyone who's involved in this and that gives their time and talent and resources. So, thank you. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Morell. Any other final remarks? Well, I just want to close. My colleagues really said it best, and so excited to see so many great faces and folks who do this work with so many different families throughout the county, to be here, to help raise awareness of this. I, too, can't help but see the juxtaposition of the two proclamations we chose to highlight today. And I love this sense of this incentive that is often used, especially at our family support centers, to utilize something as basic as diapers, to also open folks' eyes to the myriad of opportunities that so many folks work so hard to provide for so many families, and using that as an entree point. Whether they take the rest of their resources or not, I know folks give so deeply and willingly, meeting folks wherever they're at and whatever they need, but also creating that invitation that if there's another service, or making you make sure that you're aware of another opportunity that can be here when you're ready, and that you create those invitations is, we're so lucky to have your dedication to the families of Pierce County. So with that, could we invite maybe Bob and Jerry and Carrie and Kate up here, and everyone else, if you're willing, here? Because we don't have a wide enough camera.
You just have everyone up here?
As many folks who are willing to come up here to be in the photo? Thank you. We are at Section 8 of our agenda ordinances. We have proposal number 2023-34 before us. I'd like to call on Councilmember Grover for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move proposal 2023-34.
It's been properly moved, designated that we adopt proposal number 2023-34. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number 2023-34, in ordinance of the Pierce County Council authorizing the approval of applications for open space classification.
Last line, please.
The last line of the application numbers, starting with OS 8222, 922, 1022, 1122, 1222, 1322, 1522, 1622, and 1722.
Thank you. Mr. Cox to brief the council.
Yes, Chair Mello, members of the council, Jeff Cox, council staff. This is another package of open space classifications that you're so familiar with. In this particular instance, this would grant council approval to nine open space PPRS applications located in unincorporated Pierce County. The package includes one new application and eight rerated properties. Seven of the rerated properties are from farm and agriculture classification, and one is from designated forest land classification. This will result in a revenue shift of $5,570 in favor of the county in terms of total tax revenue. Properties are located variously near Eatonville, Graham, and Ordin. And I'd like to point out, the Planning Commission gave a due pass recommendation to this package of applications. I'd also like to point out that we have Mike Potit, Planner with Planning and Public Works, as well as Angie Silva, I believe, who's a planning manager with that same department. I'd be happy to answer questions. I'd remind you, Mike Potit processed all of these and has an intimate knowledge of them. Should you have questions.
Well, thank you. Ms. Silva, I do see you on, do you, does Ms. Silva or anyone else on behalf of the department? Ms. Silva, I think you've turned your camera on. Do you have anything to add on behalf of the department?
Mr. Chair, I believe Mr. Cox covered it well.
Thank you so much for making yourself available. Do any members of the council have any questions or comments before we open this up for a public hearing? Not seeing any. We will open this up for a public hearing on proposal number 2023-34. Any member of the public wish to provide comment on this proposal? We ask that you keep your comments to no more than three minutes. We'll start here in chambers. Anyone in council chambers wishing to provide comment? Not seeing any. Mr. Weinsberg, anybody in the Zoom room?
Anybody in the Zoom room? For any member of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-34, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star 9 on your telephone keypad. No hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by councilmembers? Not seeing any. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2023-34?
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Grover.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and...
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. Before we move on, I've been made aware that one of our appointees, Jay Beck, who we already confirmed to the Pierce County Parks and Recreation Citizens Advisory Board, Jay Beck has joined the Zoom room, and I'll ask Mr. Weinsberg to try to bump him as a panelist. Thank you. And we'll come back to that to see if Mr. Beck would like to introduce themselves. But let's move to... While we do that, let's move to proposal 2023-35 and ask Vice Chair Campbell for a motion on proposal number 2023-35.
Thank you, Chair. Move approval of 2023-35.
It's been properly moved and designated that we adopt ordinance 2023-35. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number 2023-35, an ordinance of the Pierce County Council admitting Section 2.06020 of the Pierce County Code, Executive Department of Executive Directors, to include service of process as a function of the county auditor's office and to designate positions in the county auditor's office authorized to accept service of process.
Thank you. Ms. Long to brief the council.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So as was summarized in the title, this proposal will authorize additional positions in the auditor's office to accept service of process for actions against Pierce County, and it will amend Section 206020 of the code to reflect those designations. By way of background, the state law at RCW 4.28.020 provides that service of process in an action against any county in the state shall be made by delivering a copy of the summons to the county auditor or during normal office hours to the deputy auditor. In a charter county, summons may be served upon the agent designated by the legislative authority. So what prompted this, I believe, is that there are instances when both the county auditor and the deputy auditor are unavailable to receive service of process in the auditor's office. So the proposal before you today will designate additional positions in the auditor's office, and those are the fiscal services manager and accounting assistant for, as authorized agents to accept service of process. And the proposal, as you'll see on your Exhibit A, would amend the code at 206020 accordingly. This was heard in the Rules and Operations Committee on August 28 and received a due pass recommendation. I will bring to your attention that there was one question that was posed during committee, and that was whether other charter counties designate additional agents for the purpose of accepting service of process, and if so, what positions were they? I believe Councilmember Morell asked that question. And I will note that our county auditor, Linda Farmer, is present with us, as is the deputy auditor Cindy Hartman, and our auditor has answers to that question, as well as any others you might have.
Thank you. This is auditor request legislation, and so, as was indicated, Madam Auditor, Linda Farmer is in our Zoom room. Madam Auditor, welcome.
Thank you so much, and good afternoon, Chairman L. and council members. I apologize I'm not there in person today. I'm in Leavenworth at a recording and licensing conference, very apropos. If approved, this ordinance will bring the auditor's office in line with post-pandemic business practices and also align us with other charter counties in Washington. Since you've had a chance to review this at the Rules and Operations Committee, I've had a chance to talk with five of the other charter counties besides ourselves in Washington about who can accept service. San Juan, Clark, and Watcom Counties deputize their entire auditor's office staff to accept service. And then Snohomish County deputizes its entire election staff to accept service, in addition to the auditor and deputy auditor. And this summer, King County switched from having the clerk of the King County Council accepting summons and complaints to having the reporting and licensing department accept summons and complaints. And that department has seven employees authorized to accept, including the director, deputy director, and five others associated with their brand-new customer service center. So with that, Chief Deputy Auditor Cindy Hartman and I are ready to take your questions.
Thank you. I think the clerk of the county council is grateful that you're not suggesting she take on yet another task, and that's in no way what you were suggesting. Thank you for your willingness to keep this important task on behalf of the people of Pierce County. Ms. Hartman, do you have anything to add to Madam Auditor's remarks?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any council members have any questions or comments before we open this up for a public hearing? Well, Madam Auditor, thank you for answering our questions. Thank you for making yourself available today, even though you're out of town on business, and your leadership staff for making themselves available for this discussion. This is a public hearing. Does any member of the public wish to provide comment on proposal 2023-35? We'll start here in chambers. Anyone wishing to provide comment on this ordinance? Not seeing anybody in chambers coming to the podium. Mr. Weinsberg, anybody in our Zoom room?
For any member of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-35, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. I see no hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? Just thank the auditor's office for making this recommendation so that we can keep the business going for the people of Pierce County and not have any stops in that work. So certainly appreciate the good work of our county auditor's office. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on proposal 2023-35?
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. That brings us to item number three, proposal number 2023-38. I'd like to call on Councilmember Herrera for a motion.
Chair, I move proposal number 2023-38 for approval.
It's been properly moved and designated that we adopt proposal 2023-38. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Yes. Proposal number 2023-38, an ordinance of the Pierce County Council repealing Chapter 9.12 of the Pierce County Code, attempted suicide relating to the misdemeanor crime of intending to commit suicide.
Thank you. Mr. Bridges to brief the council.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, this proposed ordinance comes to you by way of public safety, the due pass recommendation on September 19. It repeals the misdemeanor crime of attempted suicide. The crime existed, has been in the code since 1967. The state repealed the felony attempted suicide crime in 1975 because the involuntary treatment act is now the proper method of dealing with people who are attempting suicide. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Are there questions or comments by council members before we open this up for a public hearing? Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Bridges, for working on this. You know, this... We brought this up through public safety, just we found this law, and it's something old, and we wanted to clean it up. And it's appropriate time is now to take this off the books. I mean, we're coming in, we just had a proclamation a couple weeks ago on suicide awareness. And in that light and in that spirit, you know, for all the hurting families out there of people with issues with suicide or family members, and of course, my fellow veterans who deal with it, and anybody who's affected by a suicide, to highlight this, that the stigma of it needs to go away. We need to talk about it. We need to let folks know that there's help, and I encourage my colleagues to vote on this, to get rid of this, and in the spirit of everybody who's hurting out there. And I think it's appropriate. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank Councilmember Herrera for finding this and bringing it forward. I think it's important that we do everything we can to remove stigma. I want to have one question answered for the record. You answered it at public safety. Has anyone been charged with this crime that in Pierce County?
There is... Yeah, so, yes, we consulted the prosecutor's office. This is the answer that I received, that no one in the office can remember anyone being charged with this crime. There is the possibility, looking through some paper records, that somebody may have been charged in the early 1990s, but at that point, they didn't know the disposition of that case and what happened. So it is very rare that anybody's been charged.
I just didn't want anyone to think that there were people sitting currently in our county jail that had these charges, and we were doing things with that. So I just wanted to do that on the record. So, really appreciate that. I think that, well, it's a different call for help. It's not a crime, and at the time, we didn't have a way to provide services, so that was how county government came up to deal with it, and we have better methods now. Hopefully getting in front of it before someone attempts is really the goal. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hitchens. Any other remarks before we open this up for a public hearing? Not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Bridges. This is a public hearing on proposal 2023-38. We'll start here in chambers. Anyone wishing to provide comment on this ordinance will invite you to the podium to introduce yourself. I'm not seeing anybody coming to the podium. Mr. Weinsberg, anybody in our Zoom room?
For any member of the public wishing to provide comment on proposal number 2023-38, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. There are no hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Any final remarks by council members? I'll just close by thanking Councilmember Herrera for all the work on this, and of course, our staff and the sponsors. I really hope that, you know, when we know better, we do better, and this is example of when we know better, we do better. We should not be criminalizing folks who are in depression or extreme anxiety, where it often causes them to find no other answer but to attempt suicide. That is not the answer, and even though, as has been indicated, even though we're not charging under this county code, it's nonetheless important that we remove the stigma, as has been said, and not continue to provoke that. So thank you for bringing this forward. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on 2023-38?
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. That brings us to Section 9 Resolutions. We have proposal number R 2023-125S before us. I'd like to call on Councilmember Denson for a motion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I move proposal number R 2023-125S.
It's been properly moved and designated that we approve Resolution 2023-125S. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R 2023-125S, a resolution of the Pierce County Council acknowledging receipt of the Citizens Advisory Board's recommendations for funding the purchase of conservation futures properties, authorizing the Pierce County Executive to negotiate the purchase of conservation futures properties, and authorizing the Director of the Finance Department to expend funds for their purchase thereof. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Krueger to brief the council this evening.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you well.
Thank you. The proposed resolution before you would acknowledge the receipt of the Conservation Futures Citizens Advisory Board's recommendations for funding the purchase of conservation futures property in the next biennium, and would authorize the county executive to negotiate the purchase of seven specific conservation futures properties. All seven projects evaluated by the Conservation Futures Citizens Advisory Board in this conservation futures cycle would be eligible for acquisition through the proposed resolution based upon anticipated funding levels to be allocated through the county's 2024-2025 biennial budget. This proposal received a due pass as substituted recommendation at the August 16, 2023 Community Development Committee meeting. We have Chris Chaput on the call. Chris is with the Parks Department, and she is available to answer questions from council members regarding any of the specific conservation futures projects, and there is one amendment for the council to consider that I can describe once it has been introduced. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, do you have anything to add on behalf of the department?
No, I don't have anything to add. Mr. Krueger summarized it well.
Thank you, and thank you for making yourself available for questions. Are there any questions or comments by council members before we entertain Council Amendment Number One? I'm not seeing any. Councilmember... Excuse me. Councilmember Herrera, you do have a question?
Thank you, Chair. Just... Thank you. I just had a question on... This was just a change because we had some changes of projects on this.
The amendment will address that, I believe. Are you okay if we answer that question in the context of the amendment once it's introduced?
Sure.
Great. And if it's not, we'll certainly come back to you. Councilmember Denson to move Council Amendment Number One?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I move Council Amendment Number One.
It's been properly moved and designated that we adopt Council Amendment Number One. Mr. Krueger to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This amendment would modify Section 4 in the proposal to indicate that all of the conservation futures projects that are listed in Exhibit B are eligible for funding based upon the 2024-2025 budget assumptions. The amendment would also replace Exhibit B to reflect the reference to unfunded projects, which I believe, Mr. Chair, is the question that Councilmember Herrera was asking about. During the Community Development Committee meeting yesterday, Park staff indicated that one of the projects from this current conservation futures funding cycle that ends at the end of this year has been withdrawn. The formal withdrawal of that particular proposal added additional fund balance that we believe will be available in 2024 for the purchase of conservation futures properties that you're considering this afternoon. And so when you take a look at the amendment, in item number one, you can see that there's language that is being struck from Section 4 that speaks to unfunded projects. As we move forward, we believe that there will be no unfunded projects. And so this amendment addresses that issue, and it shows in attached revised Exhibit B that all seven projects will be eligible for acquisition following the budget approval this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krueger. Maybe put slightly differently. There's no... Because more monies are made available by... Unfortunately, a project not coming together in the current cycle, that happens. Products... Sellers aren't sellers anymore, or any number of things. Projects don't come to the finish line. That does happen sometimes in any transaction. Because there's money moving from this biennium to next biennium, there's more money available in next biennium than originally anticipated, and no longer the need for a contingency list. And why that's important is a project on the contingency list has to wait till all the other projects above the funding line get closed before we move to the contingency list. So by moving all projects up, all seven projects up, they're all able to move, no matter if they're project number one or project number seven, they're... If project number seven is ready to close, it can go because there's money available in the bank. It doesn't have to wait for project number one to close. So it is important to... Now that we have certainty that there are funds available, it's important to get rid of the contingency list and authorize the executive and the Parks Department to move forward on all seven projects. Councilmember Herrera, do you have further questions about what's going on here?
Sure. So, just to be clear, like you were saying, all these added projects were already on a list. They just weren't funded, and they just moved up because they were in the order. It wasn't one person picking and choosing what project, right?
Mr. Krueger, can you confirm?
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you for asking. Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To follow up on Councilmember Herrera's question, Mr. Krueger, the Citizens Advisory Board that does the scoring on these conservation future properties, we're not taking anything out of order or moving any projects around to get them funded faster than their score indicates. So we're just taking their projects, and since we unfortunately had a project that is not going to be funded in this cycle, we just drop down and pick up everything available to absorb that additional extra funding that we now have. Is that true?
That's correct, Councilmember Morell. And again, this is all based upon projections and the assumption that the council will pass the budget that includes a fund balance to move into the next biennium. And so, as you mentioned yesterday at Community Development Committee, we found out that one of the projects from the previous site... found out that one of the projects from the previous cycle, the 2021 cycle, was withdrawn, which freed up additional funding that allowed the projects that had initially been anticipated to, to potentially not have the money to close, now, now look like they will. And so, there's been no reevaluation of the list. All the projects will remain funded as originally intended out of the committee, and the two projects that scored the lowest by the board now will be eligible for acquisition, assuming again that those budget projections are accurate. Thank you.
Okay. And then, just a follow-up question. I think it speaks to a comment that you made. Mr. Chair, you had mentioned that it's based on fund balance. Is there any order that they have to move through these projects, or can they take any of these projects and the ones that can close the quickest get funded?
Well, so the, so the, so the, so assuming this amendment will pass, all of the projects are assumed to be fully funded, meaning that they're all eligible for closing as soon as the project sponsors and the Parks Department can complete the closing process. So, there is no order. Under the code, the only time when a, when the, when the ranked order comes into play is when you have unfunded projects, which was the scenario that we were envisioning during the committee meeting. We, we, we believe that there may be two projects that were not going to be funded, and so, those projects that were at the bottom of the list would have only become eligible for acquisition if the funded projects either were withdrawn or if there was more money that became available during the biennium. That, that scenario is no longer before the council due to the withdrawal of a 2021 project. And so, now, it appears that all seven projects will have adequate funding. Therefore, there is no ranked order related to purchasing. Once the, once the budget's adopted and we enter the year 2024, all seven of these projects will be eligible for acquisition, basically on a first-come, first-served basis as those sponsors are, are preparing their paperwork and getting ready to close. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments about Council Amendment Number One? Thank you, Mr. Kruger, for answering our questions. The motion in front of us is adoption of Council Amendment Number One, which has the effect of getting rid of the unfunded projects and making all seven projects fully funded. All those in favor of adopting Council Amendment Number One, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The motion is adopted. Is there any other questions or comments on this proposal as amended before we open this up for a public hearing? I'm not seeing any. We will open this up for a public hearing on Resolution 2023-125 S. Any member, we'll start here in chambers. Any member of the public will invite you to the podium. We'll invite you to state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your remarks. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dan Velwak. I'm not here for this particular, particular proposal or resolution. However, I would like to thank the, the county council for, for trying to preserve areas. I'm involved in an investment group that this council ended up giving away my land or our group's land to Pierce County Public Works, and, and it's in a really sensitive area where the council in 2012 ended up proposing a road system that would go through, and it would go right through wetlands, and, and is one of the most important wetlands. It's the headwaters of the south border of Muck Creek. I would hope that this council would look at what they've done in, in a few council meetings back and find out why you gave this strip of land to Public Works when there was an ordinance that was passed in 2012 that I feel was in error, and I think that the council should relook at that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being with us. Anyone else in the council chambers wishing to provide comment on this resolution about Conservation Futures Program? I'm not seeing any. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in the Zoom room?
Any members of the public wishing to provide comment on Proposal Number 2023-125 S, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands at this time, Chair.
Well, thank you. We'll close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? We'll begin with Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's been a long day, so I'm not going to talk too long. I just wanted to say I love this program, and I want to thank the, the Park staff for all of their work. These are complicated deals. These are long applications. I want to thank all the sponsoring agencies, all of the groups and the community that wrote those very, very long grants and got the letters of support and are working with, with willing sellers to, to conserve land and protect our wildlife habitats and our, our views and our trees. I just wanted to thank everyone for their, for their hard work. I'm very, very excited about these properties and look forward to visiting them all soon.
Thank you. Any other final remarks? I'll close also by adding gratitude to the Park staff, but, you know, we have an advisory board known as the Conservation Futures Citizens Advisory Board. They spend a tremendous amount of time thinking through the project proposals, making sure that the projects are worthy of public investment, and, and making recommendations to the county council. We're very grateful for the hard work that they do on our behalf to do initial vetting of, of all of this. And as Councilmember Denson said, the hard work to come by the project sponsors who do the really hard work of identifying these projects, helping to, to help secure willing sellers out there in the marketplace, that this is an option for their, for their property, for their legacy, if this is what they so choose, putting those projects together, which often require two or three or four different funding sources in order to put the project together. Our project sponsors put a lot of hard work into developing these projects and not only securing the funds, but then taking them to the finish line and closing the transaction. So, a lot of hard work goes into this. This action, as, as has been indicated, these are seven different conservation projects throughout Pierce County. It totals a little over 260 acres of conservation. Everything from a sportsman's club in Councilmember Kruger's district on Canyon Road, a very active, well-utilized sportsman club on, on Clover Creek. The, the sportsman club has property where Clover Creek runs right through it. It's a great recreational asset in the middle of Pierce County, again, in Councilmember Kruger's district. So, over 100 acres of conservation in just that project alone to allow the sportsman club to continue to be a great place for people to recreate. Two projects on the Key Peninsula in Councilmember Denson's district to conserve marine shoreline and, and farmland and, and forest land. So, there, there's a lot of different projects here. Again, over 260 acres of conservation will be facilitated by, by this action today and the hard work of many project sponsors. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2023-125 S?
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Kruger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven nyes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven nyes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That concludes our ordinances and resolutions today. That brings us to Section 10, Community Forum. Community Forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any topic that did not appear on today's agenda. There is a three-minute limit. I ask you to state your name, if you would like it on the record, and that you addressed all your comments to the chair. I'll start with those in chambers. Is there anybody in council chambers wanting to participate in Community Forum? Not seeing anybody come to the podium. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in the Zoom room wanting to participate in Community Forum?
For any member of the public wishing to provide comment during Community Forum, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. I see no hands at this time, Chair.
Thank you. We'll close the Community Forum portion of our meeting. We'll bring it back to the council. We're at Section 11, Other Business and Announcements. Is there any other business or announcements by council members? Let's begin with Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Fortunately, when we do our proclamations, we don't recognize every day that is before us, like, as many of us know, and we haven't even that recognized. It's Talk Like a Pirate Day. Our, more fun than that, it's also Butterscotch Pudding Day. So, Dave's taking us all out for butterscotch pudding. And, but what I want to bring forward to the people of Pierce County is also Voter Registration Day, when we encourage people to make sure that if you're not registered to vote, please register to vote. And if you've moved, changed your address, your phone number that you have on file with the auditor's office, make sure your registrations are up to date in this, in the National Voter Registration Day. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell, and thank you for reminding us why we have a self-imposed rule of no more than two proclamations per meeting. Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I, I appreciate the camaraderie that, that comes among fellow council members. But Executive Dan Meyer did bring up an incident that happened over the weekend pertaining to fentanyl. I think the Sheriff's Department just posted, and I'm quite sure we're going to hear about it, about the two young children that died of fentanyl overdose. And I, I think the community will want answers and responses, and we need to be able to deliver. I think, as we all know, we've been told that we are now the overdose capital of the United States, Washington State, and something needs to be done. And like I say, I, I don't know exactly what, but there's so many people that are being lost to overdoses, and, you know, it's, we need to kind of figure out how, what lane we're going to travel in as a county on this. But, you know, I, I feel very bad for those kids, that their future was cut so short so suddenly, and it's, there again, the parents. And so, with that, I just wanted to reminisce a little bit on that and maybe take a look and see what we can do. So, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you for those reflections, Councilmember Morell. It's very serious, and I know we're going to be getting into the topic during our budget deliberations about what this council is willing to invest in and how we want to organize ourselves. Councilmember, uh, excuse me, Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for bringing that, Councilmember Morell, and I think we'll work, work on something in the future. But I wanted to highlight, I'm shifting gears from that to, yesterday was the Air Force's birthday. I don't know how we forgot that, but, you know, there's a lot of Air Force personnel here in Pierce County. We have a major Air Force base here in Pierce County. I wanted to tell them all happy birthday. I think they, they came into existence in 1947, and I'm sure probably in 1945, 46, before they became their own entity, there were probably some Army guys out there, Navy people, making fun of the Air Force, just like we did when we created the Space Force. So, we're moving forward. They've been around for, I don't know how many years now, and they're an integral part of our military service, and, and I am guilty of making fun of the Air Force. But as an Army guy on the ground in Iraq, I was worshiping them. I, I loved the Air Force when they were hovering above us. I felt very safe, and thank you, guys, gals. So, thank you, Chair. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Air Force. Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. Councilmember Denson.
Thank you, and thank you for that, Councilmember Herrera. I have a cousin that served in the Air Force and a number of friends and kids of friends, so thank you for, for acknowledging that. Almost as important, though, I want to point out that it is the 50th anniversary of Tides Tavern. You all know Tides. In fact, I think you were all there when we said goodbye to Councilmember Young last year. So, they do have a, by invitation-only 50th anniversary party tomorrow, and I'm sure I can get you guys in if you would like to, not tomorrow, Thursday, if you'd like to come. If you can come see, I'm sure they'd love to see you. So, I just wanted to, wanted to say that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That sounds fun. It's a great place. Any other announcements by members? I'll just briefly remark. Earlier today, the Pierce County Council joined the entire Tacoma City Council in a, the first joint session we had in recent times, and it was a joint session focused on the major challenge in our region of homelessness. And it was a, a great conversation. I want to thank all of my colleagues for contributing so positively to a very thoughtful conversation. Both the county and the city were able to share what our respective staff teams had been working on for some time. This is not a new effort, but it was the first time both bodies came together to discuss what we have been working on separately. Our staffs work together behind the scenes with little fanfare all the time, and we were able to have a conversation together about what it would mean to do this work better together. And so, I just, I'm very grateful to the Tacoma City Council for their hospitality and hosting us for the thoughtful discussion my colleagues had with our peers at the Tacoma City Council, and, and the commitment we all made together to continue the, the thinking and the action about what joint governance, what joint work, investment, and implementation would look like, to spend tax dollars even, even wiser and have better outcomes working together and inviting other jurisdictions into this major challenge, because we know the data shows that folks experiencing homelessness, their, their places of residence start outside of Tacoma, and it, it, it begins in every zip code and every part of Pierce County. It's not a Tacoma issue, it's a Pierce County issue. So, appreciate the, the joint session and the work to come. And also, just that budget development begins. We, earlier during this meeting, we received Executive Dan Meyer's proposed budget. I know this council is going to be able to take it from here and work very hard over the next 10 weeks to develop a, a budget that is going to really work for the people of Pierce County and really deliver on this community's most challenging issues. So, we do have a website dedicated to budget development. This work is going to be done very transparently. It's going to be a lot of hard work over the next 10 weeks, and just go to the Pierce County Council website, and you'll find a, a banner towards the top of that, of the Pierce County Council website. You can follow along with all of our budget deliberations to come. With that, Ms. Long, is there any other business for council this evening? Seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council, we are adjourned.